This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 17, 2025. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Chair Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councillors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended through June 30, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the City Council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the City Council President. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or at the public hearing. You will be recognized and then you may turn on your camera. Then turn it off kindly when you're done. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby?
President.
Felicia Jazak?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to take just a moment of silence for us to reflect before the meeting. Thank you, and I would ask all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work towards it. Thank you. We have a mayoral presentation tonight on an exciting event, so...
This is actually, thank you, Council. This is actually a very exciting moment for me because when I first stepped into this role, it was kind of overwhelming and I was pretty excited about the opportunity to maybe do something that could last. And one of the ideas I've had for a very long time was to try to find a way to bridge the divide between people in the community and government and, you know, try to put forward that we're all on the same team. And I think one of the best ways to do that is to see the connections we all have and to see how people's actions within the community can really lift up the entire community and how the government can recognize that and try to support that and shine a light on that because I think that it's really important for us to be able to acknowledge the people that make our communities so great. And so this idea kind of lived in my head for a long time. I was walking down Cottage Street one day and I said, "I need to go to the East Hampton Community Center and I need to meet with Robin." And I expected the meeting to be like 20 minutes. I ended up there for like hours. And so I immediately left that meeting and came back to my office and wrote up the proposal that you see in front of you, which is the East Hampton Keys to the City program, which is... And the reason I wrote it up is because I felt like this is something they can live on. This is something that we can do into perpetuity to recognize the people that have such an enormous impact on our community and oftentimes do it. And they don't do it to be recognized. They do it selflessly and I think it's important for us to be able to look at that and say, "This is important and what is happening is so beneficial to the city." So I wrote that up and I knew right off the bat who my first recipient was going to be. And so what I'd love to do right now is I'd love to call Robin Bylecky up to the podium. And I think I'm going to step away just if you all don't mind, I'm going to kind of go between because I would love... So when I met Robin at the East Hampton Community Center, I was blown away, honestly. Like, I was so struck by the genuine empathetic, caring nature that I was like, it was in front of me. It was absolutely kind of stunning. And I didn't know exactly how I was going to like honor that, but I wanted to like, think about what you told me was so powerful, which was, "You were a Maple School parent and you were running like Girl Scouts from the East Hampton Community Center and then they broke you in to be on the board." And then, you know, years and years later, all of a sudden, you're the executive director and having such a huge impact on our community. And I think one of the things that really struck me about Robin was the fact that there was no pretense, right? There was, she would not ask somebody to do something she was not willing to do herself. And she was no stranger to hard work and that really resonated for me. You know, the East Hampton Community Center, it's not the most ideal setting for what they do and I wish that we could wave a wand as a city and find a way to give you the most beautiful state-of-the-art facility. But in lieu of that, I wanted to at least, I wanted to at least recognize the amazing work that you've done and the huge impact you've had on the city of East Hampton and surrounding communities, not just food, but clothing and toys, but really the kindness, the compassion and the empathy that you project when you meet people and when you're out there working. And I think that is amazing. Like, we talk about what does it mean to be a patriot, you know, and we have all these different definitions of that. And I would say this is what it means. It means being someone who's willing to sacrifice for your community and is not holding anything back. So Robin, it is my great honor, and I'm going to pull this out of this little box here, and I do want to say Rusty Wilkinson from Award One Engraving helped us with this and he did a great job. And so I just want to show everybody right now the first East Hampton Keys to the City award, a hope of many, and I am so humbled to be able to present this to you. So thank you so much for all you do. And this is pretty beautiful. Because we also have, we also have a citation from the city of East Hampton and my colleague and friend, Rep Omar Gomez, he's going to come up and he's going to present you one as well.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. President, thank you. City councillors, I just want to say something really quick because I know it's going to be a long meeting. I think so. So food insecurity is really concerning, really, really concerning, more now than ever. We're getting cuts for the federal government, for Fustan and other programs. And we have a champion in our community, a champion who really cares about people, a champion who really cares about people's getting the right food on their tables, and that's Robin. Robin, I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud to represent you twice, as a resident, as a someone who doesn't work, who do what is the best for the community, and that's you. So I have a citation in behalf of the state reps and the Speaker of the House. Congratulations, you deserve not just this, you deserve the key, the door, the house of the community, the world you live in, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, this is your moment, if you'd like. This really is your moment. And I'm sorry, we didn't plan, I don't know if public speaking at this moment, if there was something about the center or about your life, about your experience, feel free if you'd like. Otherwise, you may, you may be going back to the community center to work. I don't know. I know how busy you are.
I have to say, thank you all for this.
Could you mind going to the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is an absolutely huge honor, which I share with most of the audience, are my volunteers, my wonderful friends that... They're amazing, they work extra hours, they do everything beside me. It is a community effort. We truly love being a community center and part of this community. And most people know that we would do anything to make it work and keep people fed and healthy. My husband and my family are here. Everybody knows that Val and I are partners for 43 years and he works... I can't thank you enough, this is just a huge honor and I am very pleased. Thank you so much.
Robin, it is our pleasure to acknowledge you and the work you've done and the work of your volunteers. Everyone has worked hard in this process. It takes a village to raise a village and to care for a village. And we feel honored and special to have that in our community. I know personally, 20, 25, 25, a long time ago, I met you for the first time and every time since, it's been the same smile and the same caring for the community, which the reach out was just fabulous. I true am honored to be able to give you this recognition today. It is our pleasure, I'm sure I speak for the entire council, thank you for being part of East Hampton, for making East Hampton what it is. I would recognize anyone else if there did need, thank you so much. If you aren't ready for the public hearing and all the other business of the city, please feel free, you may, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to stay, of course, but feel free, feel free, feel free to go. And that'll give us just a moment.
Get back here.
Are we allowed to go as well?
So I would ask you, on the way out, to leave the room to the rest of us though, if you wouldn't mind. Not rushing anyone. While we wait for the room to clear, I would return to the minutes. They'll be available at the next meeting, the minutes for September 3. Normally at this point, we go directly to public comment. However, we have a public hearing in a minute or so. So I will ask everyone to hold their public comments for, after the public hearing. If, of course, you had matters regarding the public hearing, there will be time to speak at the public hearing for those items on the agenda listed for the public hearing, the borrowing and bonding, authorization, the supplemental appropriation requests that are also on the public docket. And with that, I would take a motion to open the public hearing. Motion to second to open the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This hearing is now open. We have a bonding and borrowing project, authorization rather, and I turn the mic over to our finance chair, councillor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so this has been something we've been discussing for a few months now and it is quite complicated. I will do my best to describe it and then I will probably have various city employees who will want to point out what I missed. But the basic idea of this whole thing is that we're talking about the Ferry Street invested revenue district. So basically, the sort of Ferry Street parcel where all the redevelopment is occurring. Over the last few years, we've been working towards slowly doing what's called a DIF, that's District Improvement Financing. So essentially what that means is that rather than the way that most of the, most of the revenue in the city is collected, basically, what will happen is that we form the special district and then any additional revenue over sort of what would have been coming in at the sort of valuation that the property had sort of as an undeveloped parcel, any additional tax revenue that we collect as a result of the parcel being improved, will sort of go into a special program that will be used, into a special account that will be used to pay for the various infrastructure improvements that are going to be going hand in hand sort of with the private development. And so that's broadly sort of what a DIF is and how it works. In this particular case, the motion that we have before us is about authorizing up to $3 million to be borrowed or bonded. And what this would go towards is the demolition of one of the existing structures that's on the parcel, that 11 Ferry Street, and then some of the construction infrastructure improvements, utilities, whatnot, that would go on around there. This isn't the last bit of work that would be going on as part of this program, but it's the only part that the city currently anticipates borrowing or bonding any funds for. The idea is that then, as these buildings are built, we'll collect this new revenue and that that revenue will then be used to pay down the, to make the bond payments on the, on this, on this bond. We might not need to appropriate this entire amount. Whether or not we do is kind of a function of, like, of a few things. It might make sense to do some of these projects, like, you know, sort of to bond for what we need at that exact moment. And so it's not clear that we're going to necessarily need the 3 million, but that's the cap of what the city is asking this council to authorize them to borrow. And then, man, there's just so many other details involved in this. I think that that's a decent introduction, though.
That's a great introduction. I would ask the mayor to go to the podium and fill us in some more.
So thanks councillor Peak for the intro. I'll add a couple of things. So the DIF district was developed in conjunction with basically a pilot program. So the developer could look over the next 25 years to see exactly what the payments would be to the city. And part of that agreement was that those funds would go into infrastructure projects in this DIF area. And so what we're looking at for this particular bonding would be the exploration and engineering of the demolition of the old generator building. And that is a pretty critical piece of the ability to be able to start developing the other buildings because if this was still standing when the development of the other buildings happened, it could potentially fall and cause a lot of damage and potentially hurt people. So this piece is kind of, is one of the most important pieces just to get everything else going. And I will say that what we're hoping is that we're asking for authorization of up to $3 million. We're hoping that we don't necessarily need to use that $3 million. And we're also, the good news is the initial piece of this would be about $250,000 for the engineering and then that'll give us a really clear idea of where we're going to go from there for the demolition. And this will all be paid for by the, they're called 6A payments, from the developer, which is basically a pilot. So in addition to that, one of the things that we need to consider is the payments don't necessarily, looking at the bonding that we're looking at now, don't necessarily fully cover the payments that the city would need to have in order to pay the bonding. But we were able to figure out how to work with that. And so if you look at the end result after the 25 years, we'll have much more than the 3 million plus interest. And so, you know, we'll end up having more money from this account than we're asking for right now. And we did get word from our external auditor that we had basically, if worst-case scenario happens, which, you know, we tried to look at the worst-case scenario, if the worst-case scenario happens, then we would have about seven years of deficit in this account. And just because the payments don't keep up with the bonding payments. And we were able to get confirmation from our external auditor that we would be able to use stabilization funds to offset that and then be able to return those stabilization funds back once the fund, after that time. Now, that's worst-case scenario. What we're hoping is that the building will get a certificate of occupancy in 2029, which would prevent any deficit whatsoever, and we would actually have a significant surplus in this account moving forward. So that is, you know, part of the pieces that we've been trying to put together. And I think one other thing that's important to understand about this project is the reason why we're asking for city money for this is because we have reciprocal easements on this property. So the city has easements, the developer has easements, we all have, and so this project would be a city project. So I have, Michael Owens is here, and if you wanted to know about this type of project, he could, you know, enlighten you on that. I also have Allison and she can kind of go into like the DIF and the 6A payments and how that works. And Hadel, I think, is on the line as well. And I see the developers as there as well. So hopefully I filled in some gaps. Okay. Any questions?
I just was wondering if you wanted to have any of the individuals say a few words before the public was asked, before the councillors, if they had something else to add.
I think Allison...
The more information that folks can get, kind of wrap their heads around this, it takes a while to get, to get this.
Hi, everyone. Allison Manuel, I'm the planning director. So the Ferry Street District Improvement Financing District was actually created in 2018. We're now kind of catching up with some of the other statutory requirements, which are further down on your agenda. And this borrowing is all associated with the objective of the DIF, which is to incentivize private development. It is an economic development tool, that's why the state has allowed this program to happen in municipalities. One thing I wanted to mention is the bottom line payment is projected to be about $6.4 million at the end of the development program, which backdates to July 1st of 2020 and goes through June 30th of 2050. So the borrowing of up to 3 million, as was said, will be paid back in full with these pilot payment in lieu of taxes, payments by the developer over the course of the DIF program. The DIF itself is somewhat straightforward, but also complicated. But again, the important part is just that it's an economic development tool and that we are going to leverage very, very substantial private investment if this moves forward. I just want to highlight quickly the private investments that are projected. 11 Ferry Street, it's, I think, 96 units of housing, 91 of which are income restricted. They already received state tax credits to move forward with that. It's a $51 million private investment. 7 Ferry Street is about a $41 million private investment. And there is also a potential 9 Ferry Street investment, which has a value to be determined. So at the least, it's a $92 million investment that this will leverage. The taking down of the building and the financing for that is kind of the last piece to unlock everything else. So we're optimistic that everything will go well and, you know, it will pay back in dividends.
Thank you.
I can certainly answer more technical questions and go into more detail if desired, but I'll leave it at that for now.
What would...
I would, yeah.
What would happen if one of the payments were missed by the developer, like if we went into an economic downturn and the payment couldn't be made?
So the city does, it's a contract. We have recourse for, if the developer defaults on those payments. I think some of the options that have been discussed include putting a lien on the property. So there has already been development and improvements on the property that are valued much more than what we're talking about here, so we would be able to recoup that cost.
Any other questions from the councillors? I would open this up to the public before, Michael Owens, wait a minute, just before we do that, I see a city treasurer. The former treasurer, procurement officer, I'm sorry.
Good evening, councillors.
You should have plenty of time nowadays, right? Now that you're not doing two jobs and more.
Exactly. Good evening, councillors, good to see you all. If you approve this borrowing tonight, this will become a public project. As the mayor had mentioned, there are reciprocal easements on this property. So it's basically a shared, shared reciprocal easements with the developer. I had an opportunity to walk through the site last week with the developer. I am familiar with the challenges and complexity of this project. All the, all the funds, if you do approve the borrowing, will be spent in compliance with Massachusetts procurement law. That means bidding under chapter 149. As I said, I've got experience with two similar projects. I was responsible for demolition, demolition of the Hampton Steam Plant and the former base hospital at Westover Air Force Base. So the challenge here is getting into these buildings, identifying what hazardous materials need to be cleaned up, getting them cleaned up and then getting the buildings demolished. The majority of the demolition work that needs to be undertaken is going to happen at 11 Ferry Street and that is the site of the new housing to be constructed by New City Development, the 96-unit affordable housing project. That's where a majority of this demolition work is going to take place. The city also has secured grants in the amount of $4.4 million for public improvements on that property, as well as the public improvements that, in the surrounding areas, specifically the Parsons and Ferry Street intersection. So if I can answer any of your questions, I'd be happy to.
Councillors? Mayor, anyone else from the city before we move on to the public comment? Mayor, anyone else? Although I do see the developer here who may wish to say a few words at this point, if you'd like. Mr. Michael Mishon?
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Good evening all. Thank you again for this hearing tonight and we're looking forward to your support, you know, your continued support that I have had as a developer over the last, well, since 2009, between Pleasant Street and Ferry Street projects. We look forward to finalizing the Ferry Street project with the city, you know, hopefully soon.
Thank you. You could turn off your microphone? Great. Anyone from the public? This is the time, you will have up to three minutes. We, you may ask anything of any of the parties that you have, questions about anyone here in the audience. Please come to the podium if you would identify yourself, where you live, for the record. Please come to the podium if you would identify yourself, where you live, for the record. And you have up to three minutes.
Roger Anderson, 50 Westview Terrace. I fully support this. It sounds like a fantastic idea. I just had a question that I didn't understand that may be very basic. But funding the infrastructure for the developer makes a lot of sense. I was just curious why the demolition is also included and why that wasn't just the developer's responsibility? And why is there payment in lieu of taxes instead of just straight taxes? So I know there's someone who knows a lot more than me has answers to all of this. Thank you.
Did you want to address that now or wait for the rest of the comments?
I, I can do it.
I, I would think it would be helpful while the questions press.
So, yeah, and those questions, I think, so I'll take the second one first, which is why the pilot. So as we, I believe it was maybe 2018 when we did the pilot agreement, and really what it was designed to do was to give stability and predictability to the developer, because, you know, in big projects like this, if you don't know, and I think there were examples as the mills kind of developed, of the assessor going in and charging a significant increase in taxes that was unexpected when some of the buildings came online. And so what this does is it really creates a very stable timeline, so the developer can use that to really plan this development forward, which allows for the project to, to stay on track, for it to happen and, and to have that level of predictability that I think for a giant project like this needs to be in place. So that, that's why. And then the second piece, which is, you know, why, why is the city funding this and not the developer? And that goes back to the reciprocal easements and the, the cooperation between the city and the developer. This is one of those things that is, you know, that we can take on, that is going to help the developer leverage. So this bonding is actually going to help the developer leverage other monies in order to make this project a reality. And so they want to make sure that we, they, that the developer has a solid partnership with the community and the, the piece that we have reciprocal easements over this, we own, or we're in control of a lot of this property that is going to be engineered and then demolished. So I'm, I'm hoping that that answered the question, hopefully, and-
Thanks for an understandable answer.
We do our best. Don't always succeed, but we do our best. Anyone else from the audience here for public comments on the public hearing? We'll turn to the online. Anyone online, if you could raise your hand, and I'll take you in order of raising your There's little hand buttons down the bottom. I just want to be sure I don't miss anyone. I'll review again.
They'll jump to the top.
Yeah, I don't see any other takers. This is your last chance. Going once, going twice. We're going to bond and borrow up, authorize the bonding and borrowing of up to $3 million. All right. Thank you so much. The public speak time is now closed. This matter will be discussed by the council and moved forward. There's no more public comment. I'd ask everyone to please turn off your audio and visual to mute, and we'll move forward. Mr. Finance?
Mr. Finance, love it. Okay. Yeah, so just one thing I wanted to say about this, this is sort of a, just thinking over the last few months and the conversations we've had. I'm sort of a nerd for municipal stuff. I find it interesting. I think it's the only part of government that ever works, so I, I like to read about it. And there are a lot of people who I generally find persuasive and interesting, who are skeptical of these sorts of things in general, the tips and the dips and whatever. Because there's a lot of communities out there who I think maybe overuse these programs, who you'll see them giving sort of tax improvement, district improvement financing for like a Taco Bell that's being built on a green field. And that's, I just, so I think that the thing is that some people who pay attention to this stuff, I think, might have a sense of these programs because of how they are used in some communities. And that's really not what I see this as. You know, we're talking about a parcel that I think everyone in the community, except for maybe the odd sort of urban explorer, has wanted to see redeveloped for a long time, and who, that, one of the reasons why it has taken so long is because there's a lot of very complicated and expensive things that have to be done on this parcel before a developer can ever make a single dollar on it, right? The parcel itself, it's in a wonderful location, but it has a bunch of expensive and difficult things about it that are the result of how it has been used historically, you know, just in terms of, you know, updating infrastructure, in terms of, you know, abatement for all sorts of materials and existing structures that are no longer safe and, and things like that. Once this property is redeveloped, the city will receive a substantial amount of revenue that it currently is not receiving because the property is valued at, I don't remember the number, but it's not a very big one, right now. You know, when you've got all these housing units there and commercial units, it's going to be worth a lot more, and we're going to make that money back. So I think that, you know, along with the reciprocal easements and the various sort of infrastructure improvements that we're able to potentially go out, and there was the Mass Works grant that we were able to get a few years back as a result of this project going in, I really am comfortable with the idea of doing a diff in this particular case. And then just, yeah, I guess that's my point, yeah.
Other councilors? Councilor Jansik?
I just want to say I am really excited about this project, and I think that to Councilor Peak's point, this is going to bring in a lot of revenue in the future for the city and just a lot of needed housing. So I, I'm really excited to be able to vote yes for this.
Thank you. Other councilors? Not seeing any. I just wanted to say, if you've been around East Hampton for a while, this whole area really needed improvement. There's no doubt in anyone's mind. This has been an ongoing project for years and years and years, and I think members of the community share the, the pride in having this kind of structure and upon it's being revived. It's kind of fun to walk on, on the boardwalk there, in, in, on the sidewalk area. It's a fun place to pass. I'm sure the residents off of Ferry Street enjoy it a lot more, and will enjoy it a lot more in the future. The city will receive the revenue back. It's our opportunity to make these all happen, and I'm glad to support the project. That being said, no further comments? I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Before I make the motion, I actually have one quick question for the mayor or our planning director, whoever wants to take.
Of course.
So when we were doing this in committee, there was a resolution that I was reading along with this. Is that what we should be doing here as well? I just ask because the, the updated material I got did not include a resolution, and I have it. I just want to know if that's something I should be reading.
So the, the resolution should have been included in the packet. It was a fully up-to-date one. If not, I have a copy, I have a couple copies with me.
You need a copy?
However, the resolution is related to the District Improvement Financing, Invested Revenue District and Invested Revenue District Development Program.
Sure.
Are a separate vote that's needed.
Okay, but I'll do that in finance because the public hearing isn't needed for that, right?
Correct. That's not part of the public hearing. There should also be a motion for the bonding borrowing.
Yes, I have that. So I'll do that now because that's what the public hearing is set for. There's also a resolution that we need to read in to adopt this district and get everything rolling. I will do that when we get to finance because it's not on our public hearing agenda, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. Can I just make one really quick comment before you read? So one of the other benefits that I, I've neglected to mention before is because we have reciprocal easements in this area, there, this is going to be improvements made for the public good as well. So that would include parking and access to the bike path. So it makes it even more attractive to the residents of that area and visitors. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that $3 million is appropriated to pay the cost of executing the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program, including demolition of the existing structures at 11 Ferry Street, construction of public utility services, public parking, emergency vehicle access, and a multi-use path to connect Ferry Street to the northern section of the Manhan Rail Trail, including the payment of costs incidental thereto. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow up to $3 million to pay the cost of executing the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program under and pursuant to chapter 40Q, section two of the general laws, and pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, and that the mayor and the treasurer are each authorized to take any and all actions necessary to carry out the purpose of this order.
Is there a second? Motion in a second on the floor. Is there further discussion? I did have one question that I recall, I think would be important for the public to know, that we're authorizing the bonding and the borrowing. The borrowing, as you, as, as has been said, may not take place until later, and that, I would think some comments on that would be appropriate for the public to understand.
Yes, that, that is my-
Yeah, sure. I mean, because I think at this point, or do you want to hear that from-
No, really, I'm not going to, I don't want to necessarily hear it from the mayor.
That, that is what we were told in finance was that we're, they're not going to just bond all of this tomorrow and start making bonding payments on it. They'll probably bond, you know, it, it's sort of, there, there, there's a number of factors here that are going to be in play, but they'll, they'll probably be bar, bonding as needed to carry this out.
I just wanted to clarify that so that everyone understood. Thank you. Anyone else for questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. We'll move on to the next matter, the supplemental appropriation requests.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the first supplemental appropriation request is for $20,000 from the reserve fund to legal. Basically, what this is, is that during the, during the budget process, we had, you know, a vote had been taken to reduce the appropriation towards legal expenses, which was part of sort of a, you know, back and forth that we were having about some, some personnel actions that were taken. At this point, the city needs to pay some legal bills, and so they are asking for these $20,000 to do so, which is not the whole of what was reduced, but it's what they're going to need at this point. And for what it's worth, I mean, I think maybe the mayor Derby can speak to this further, but I, the city has been working to address some of the personnel, or all of the personnel concerns that actually led to this action in the first place. So I felt comfortable with this.
So if I understand it correctly, the, there was a reduction in, in the line item. The mayor comes to us and asks for the money. It also gives some additional flexibility with the council's authority to negotiate with the mayor and to be, to work with the mayor. And we appreciate having that opportunity, and we appreciate the request. It's time to pay the bills, in my opinion. Mr. Mayor?
So we all remember this because we all voted for it. We reduced the budget by 75,000. The line item we reduced was the legal line item. We decided not to ask for the full 75,000 back, and so right now we're asking for 20,000 just to make sure that we can pay our bills and, and that we have enough to get us through till the next time we have to come back. And, you know, hopefully that's not very often. And in relation to the other matter, you will see on the agenda tonight that there is an appropriation. That appropriation is to restore all of the hours of the people, and it's, it still has to go to finance, and it still has to have a public hearing, but it is on your agenda tonight. And so that number is the number that it's going to take to restore everybody back to where they were. And so, important to note.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions about this matter?
No questions, just-
Counselor General?
Yeah, thank you.
Before we open to the public?
Yeah, no question, just clarification that only five councilors voted for this and four didn't. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. I would open this up now to the public. Members of the audience here, any comments on the $20,000 from the reserve fund for legal expenses? Seeing none, anyone from the online community? Please raise your hand. You may do so by the little hand button down the bottom. I don't see anyone. The public comment section is now closed. I would entertain further questions or a motion, whichever the council desires.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Let's hear the motion then.
I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested, $20,000 to be transferred from reserves, $20,000 to be transferred to legal, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: legal costs billed for FY '26 legal budget that was not funded in, for this fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second on the matter? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item 2B, $5,830 from the reserve to fund the auditor's salary.
Yes, thank you. So this one is a little interesting because we sort of voted, we had set the public hearing for it, but at the, at the finance meeting, we did not take any action on this item. And the reason for that is that after receiving an update from Mayor Derby, this would be funding that would be sort of restoring the auditor to 40 hours a week. We, we thought that it might be nice to do this at the same time as the other staff that are having their hours reduced, or increased, because the, just the reality of the situation is that our auditor is now working 40 hours a week. Now, without this funding eventually happening, eventually that will be a problem, but not till like the summer. So for that reason, it was our thought that basically we might hold off on this one until the appropriation to fund the other ones, just so that we could do everybody at the same time. And so with that in mind, I think what I'll probably ultimately do is make a motion to continue this item until our next public hearing, since I do see we have new business about the other things. So I think that that's a thing that we can do. That was the will of the committee, so I, that, that's probably what I will do, but if anyone has any questions or anyone from public wants to say anything, you know.
Mr. President? Just wanted to look down here. If we continue the hearing for the, is this for the 5830? Yeah. For the 5830, and we're going to set a public hearing for the new thing in the packet, is that the 16250? Do we have to continue one and then create a new public hearing for the second one? We can't just use this, this one we got today? We needed to make two motions to create-
There are two separate-
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, there'll be- Right, there'll be a motion for this. And then later on, when the matter comes up, there'll be a motion on that also. Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question for clarification as well.
Absolutely.
Given that the appropriation is to increase her hours till December 31st, I'm just wondering if we were to pause on this, would that cause any lapse in the increase of the hours?
No. The hours are already being worked. It's just a matter that eventually, that's going to mean that that budget item is going to run out of money a little bit faster than we had budgeted for. So eventually, we're going to need to add these hours to that line item. But it's not going to be this week and it's not going to be this month.
That's what I thought I heard. I just wanted to be clear about it. And I would just like to make another general comment. And I just want to acknowledge Counselor Dunham, who from the very beginning with this salary and the decrease of hours was very diligent in making sure this was healed. And I just want to acknowledge that this wouldn't be happening without your advocacy. So I just want to be very transparent about that.
Thank you. I would open it up to the public for any comments on the 5830 from the reserve fund to the auditor's salary? Anyone in the audience? Anyone online? Seeing none. I will close the public comment section on this matter. This matter is available for further discussion by the council or any motions that you might, that you might have.
I would like to make a motion to continue this item until our October 8th meeting and set a public hearing for it there.
Continue to our, is there a second?
Sorry?
I hear of a motion in a second on the floor to continue this matter to October 8th at our, at a public hearing to be continued at that date at 6:15 in these chambers. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries, thank you. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Second, motion in a second. All those in, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. We're able to move on. We go back to public comment at this time. So at public comment, the procedure is that the members of the public can come up and speak. We'll have up to three minutes at this time. We ask you to identify yourself and speak and with your, with your address and to speak about anything that may be on your mind. We do not respond to anything said at this point in the process because it may end up as a violation of open meeting law. We don't do that as a policy. We do listen. If there's any discussion on any matter, feel free to follow up with emails or telephone calls to us. We're, any, any one of us would be happy to try to answer your questions. But please don't be offended if we don't respond or try to answer questions at that point. You're up.
Okay, Carolyn Kooshing, Main Street, Precinct 4. I'm here wearing my former poet laureate hat, part of the arts community, which I think we all acknowledge is a key to the development of East Hampton, leading to amazing projects like the Ferry Street Project. Little preface here, I'm bringing you Grace Paley. Words of hers, she's acclaimed story, short story writer, poet, political activist. And I've come to share a poem of hers and just a little bit about her life. She was born into a Russian Jewish family in 1922, grew up in the Lower East Side of New York City, was known for pacifism and for political activism broadly focused on social justice, civil rights, anti-war, anti-nuclear feminism. She believed in the Jewish diaspora, not a state, and criticized Israel's treatment of Palestinians. She was arrested numerous times for her activism and the FBI declared her a communist and kept a file on her for 30 years. She was like this tall. She believed that writers and artists needed to respond to the injustices of the world. And her poem Responsibility says it powerfully. And this is something that poet laureates past and present try to live up to. Responsibility. It is the responsibility of society to let the poet be a poet. It is the responsibility of the poet to be a woman. It is the responsibility of the poet to stand on street corners, giving out poems and beautifully written leaflets, also leaflets they can hardly bear to look at because of the screaming rhetoric. It is the responsibility of the poet to be lazy, to hang out and prophesy. It is the responsibility of the poet not to pay war taxes. It's the responsibility of the poet to go in and out of ivory towers and two-room apartments on Avenue C and buckwheat fields and army camps. It's the responsibility of the male poet to be a woman. It's the responsibility of the female poet to be a woman. It is the poet's responsibility to speak truth to power, as the Quakers say. It is the poet's responsibility to learn the truth from the powerless. It's the responsibility of the poet to say many times, "There is no freedom without justice, and this means economic justice and love justice." It's the responsibility of the poet to sing this in all the original and traditional tunes of singing and telling poems. It's the responsibility of the poet to listen to the gossip and pass it on in the ways storytellers decant the story of life. "There is no freedom without fear and bravery. There is no freedom unless earth and air and water continue and children also continue." It is the responsibility of the poet to be a woman, to keep an eye on this world and cry out like Cassandra, but to be listened to this time. All of us poet laureates try and live up to that. And we're lucky to have Carolyn Zajkowski, currently as our poet laureate, meeting that challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Markey, 37 Holyoke Street. I want to speak to the resolution that Counselor Kuzinski...
Good job.
Thank you.
With the name pronunciation.
Had to get a refresher. I want to speak to two things. The disruption at the meeting last week was appalling. The constant disruption by people in line, the people pacing the room with intimidation tactics and the fact that the police had be called was beneath us as a community in East Hampton. That's the first thing I want to say. Second thing is I want to speak in full support of your resolution, Mr. President. Our current commander in chief has been convicted of 34 felonies. He has ICE in our town, abducting our community members without any sort of communication with the police department whatsoever. Mark Milley called President Trump a fascist to the core. I'm going to trust a general over a man who's been convicted of 34 felonies and is adjudicated racist. He has also recently started attacking the Democrats, which by, at 2020, over 38% of Americans identified as a Democrat in the United States. That's my party. And the rhetoric is only going to get worse. It's not lost on me when the resolution comes to pass. We could be down to potentially six counselors voting on it. I hope it passes unanimously with the people that are here. I'm going to end this speaking with a quote by Thomas Jefferson. "If a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to do so." Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Mansar, 359 Main Street. I also want to speak to the resolution, supporting the Constitution and democracy. This country was founded on the principle that the law rests in the word and not in the person. It was the principle of the Iroquois Confederacy, founded in 1399 as a great treaty of peace that brought together war infections among the Native Americans in the Northeast. Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, and many other of the founding individuals and families of this country knew the Iroquois Confederacy, knew its constitution, and drew from it in forming our own constitution. They are the great founding principles of our country and our dream of democracy. U.S. Constitution has never served us wrong. We have added to it, but we have never changed the bedrock principles of it. The word rests in the law and not in the individual. Counselor Kuzinski proposed this resolution and in the Rules Committee, in beautiful words, Counselor Jansko reaffirmed it. Those two counselors have taken the initiative for us, the residents of East Hampton, to reaffirm our adherence and confidence in the Constitution and reject the violations as outlined in the resolution. To wit, disobeying court rulings, attempting to overturn birthright citizenship, denying foundational civil liberties such as habeas corpus, withholding congressionally approved funds, closing congressionally created departments and agency, unilaterally imposing tariffs, interfering in state-run elections, deploying the U.S. military on U.S. soil and against our own residents, obstructing congressional oversight of executive departments and agencies, and launching military strikes without the consent of or authorization of Congress. I urge the rest of the city council, Counselors Smith, Peak, Riley, Coniff, and Terrell, to vote the resolution and reaffirm their commitment to the word of law and the rejection of the measures against the Constitution outlined in this resolution. Rejecting the revolution on any excuses, any, is to reject the rule of law. And I believe that this rejection of the rule of law will be remembered by the majority of voters in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Please come to the podium.
Kathy Wazinski, Overlook Drive. I would say that honoring Constitution Day is a noble idea. Unfortunately, this resolution dishonors our Constitution. The views of only a portion of our community are represented in this resolution, although I would expect nothing else from the majority of the city council. I have sat here or stood here and spoken on many of occasions while some of you had just rolled your eyes and ignored what we had to say until other people might have joined in. Specifically, I'm talking about the battery storage issue. When I brought it forth, people were just ignoring it until it became more of a reality. And one city counselor actually had the audacity to say, "Well, when it was just you and Jean talking about it, we didn't really care because your views typically differ from ours, so we're just going to ignore you." The disrespect from the majority of this city council to large portions of this city is disappointing. And I hope that you take an opportunity you have here to no longer be divisive and not continue the divisive rhetoric that is damaging our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Carl Proll, Underline Farm, 15 Torrey. Slightly lighter topic, but just as serious and a little late now that she's left. But overdue and well-deserved recognition for all of Robin's work and collective efforts at the community center. I think we all recognize that it's absolutely essential. So in addition to these accolades, let's commit to supporting the community center financially. Let the city of East Hampton contract with Robin and the ECC to continue the good work to feed our family and neighbors in need so that no one in East Hampton knows hunger. Let's find a way to make sure Robin has the resources she needs to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none here, I would open this up to members of the online community. Please raise your hand. The little button down below with the hand. And I will recognize you. I've scanned twice here.
Yeah, if you raise their hand, they pop to the top.
They pop to the top.
They go up to the left-hand corner if they raise their hand.
Yeah, so I don't see anyone else. I would then close public speak at this time. The rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay and listen. And I would ask that you show the respect of being as calm as possible during the process and respectful. We hope, as members of this, of this council, I'll speak for everyone, to be as respectful as possible in terms of having everyone have the opportunity to speak. And that is our goal. I know it is in the hearts of each and every one of us. And we recognize that we're not all going to agree on issues. Sometimes we will, sometimes we won't. That being said, I ask for your patience and throughout the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much. Moving on. Items for immediate attention? I don't see anything.
Number seven, we got a speaker.
Oh. Oh, my apologies. It's in blue and it blacks the, it blocks the black and I can't see that. So that, thank you, thank you, Mary Ann. We do have a speaker. We have an update on the new city infrastructure improvement project by the city's engineering consultant. Thank you. We're all ears.
Excellent. Good evening. I'm Joanna Stacy, Senior Planner and TDBG Program Manager in the City Planning Department. I'm here this evening to share final design plans for the new city infrastructure improvement project, which grew out of the 2022 New City Master Plan. Constructed in the early 1900s, New City is one of the oldest neighborhoods in East Hampton and has some of the oldest infrastructure. New City Master Plan assessed infrastructure condition and function and identified the northern part of the neighborhood as the highest priority for upgrades. In 2023, the city was awarded $815,000 in community development block grant funds for engineering permitting and design plans for the reconstruction of the roadways, sidewalks, water, and drainage for five streets, Oakdale Place, Dartmouth Street, Exeter Street, Federal Street, and Glen Cove Place, and for the rehabilitation of the sewers throughout the New City neighborhood. The city also obtained funding from CPA and the State Earmark to develop designs for the existing Parson Street Park and a new park on the one-acre vacant lot behind the Parson Street School. The city solicited proposals in 2023 and awarded the project to Kleinfelder in 2024 with Clover Martin Design Group as a sub-insultant for the park's design. To date, city staff and the project consultants have held three public outreach events to gather input from residents and have also presented preliminary plans to the Parks and Rec Commission and the Board of Public Works. The project is now in the final design stages and we're pleased to share the designs with the council and the public. Once this project is complete, the city will have bid-ready plans and specifications for all work described above. Plans will be shared to the project page on the city website when they're complete. At this time, I'd like to introduce the project consultants who will describe the design process and share the final plans. Pamela Westgrave PE is the principal engineer at Kleinfelder with over 15 years of experience helping communities with infrastructure improvement projects. She was a key author of the city's Integrated Water Resources Management Plan. Cecilia Carmona is the Operations and Business Manager for Kleinfelder's Nimminklin Water Group. She has over 20 years of experience in municipal wastewater projects for planning and to design and construction. We welcome, they'll start the presentation momentarily and we welcome questions after the presentation.
Thank you.
Trying to share my screen here.
This is my host.
Oh, my apologies.
There we go.
Which one? I'll entertain any help.
They were assured.
Good. How did that happen?
I was sure.
Because... Because I took the hair.
Can we make that bigger? Mr. President, can we make that bigger?
Yeah.
Uh, I will defer to the experts. Is it possible to make the screen bigger?
Yeah, I think that middle one.
Starting the presentation.
That. Keep going past it.
How in the...
The box in the middle.
At the bottom?
At the bottom?
Are we down here? Come on up. Peg, you're great at this.
I'm just asking.
Oh. I thought you were going to lead us through this.
No, I am.
Which one would you like?
I'm retired.
No, 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 no. After all that expertise? We haven't done this before, so.
It might be helpful if you go into presentation mode in PowerPoint. That'll make it a little bigger.
It's not.
We apologize for the technical difficulty, and we will get through this.
Every meeting's a learning experience.
Every one's a learning experience. This is the first time. It's a little better. We can't really do anything with that, so that's okay. There was it. You made it bigger, but I'd love to, we could close that out, but I don't want to. Yeah. How do we get rid of view? Well, that looks like this is the best we're going to get.
Oh, great.
Voila.
That's our backup.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Johanna.
Thank everyone for their patience.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you for having us here. We're really excited to present what we've done. It's going to be a high-level presentation, just to describe what we've done here for this city. First off, the project scope included what we called Phase One Streets, and as Johanna said, in the northern portion of the city. On those streets, we designed roadway improvements, new water mains, stormwater improvements, as well as some wastewater upgrades. Additionally, we designed Parsons Street and Lincoln Street Parks, and for all of those, we have project deliverables that include construction drawings, bid-ready packages with specifications, and include the engineer's opinion of probable cost. All of the projects, for both of the projects, we had outreach events within the community. The first two were in the community itself at Parsons Street. We had a park parcels design workshop where we described, you know, what we were looking at at the beginning of design and solicited feedback from community members, and we shared ideas about park features and listened to what the community members were interested in. Additionally, we had marked up the street and had members of the community come and look at and talk with us about what they were interested in, and we shared our ideas and listened to their feedback. We explained the infrastructure improvements, solicited feedback about drainage and sidewalk elements, as well as just general conditions and how we were going to address safety issues, et cetera. The last event was at the East Works Building, where we presented a more developed parks' design. What we're showing in the slide here is the final design. We had information and feedback on these designs for the community members, and about 40 people showed up for that event, which was, we considered, successful. I'm going to introduce Cecilia now, who's going to talk about the Phase One Streets, and then I'll jump back in to talk a little bit more about the parks.
Thanks, Pam. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to talk about the ins and outs of the actual design and what's going to happen to the infrastructure in New City. So the overall goal for this project was to bring the infrastructure up to modern standards. And how do we get that? How do we do that, right? So the goal for the roadway is to increase walkability and to make sure that the sidewalks are ADA compliant. What does that mean for the water system? To have a reliable system that has good access for maintenance and future emergencies. What does it mean on the stormwater side? Is to make sure that we're addressing nuisance flooding and that we're mitigating towards the 2070 10-year storm. And then for the wastewater is extending its useful life. So how do we do that? For the streets, we make sure that the ramps are compliant. You can see at the bottom of the screen, in the left is the current state of those crossings and the proposed look of how they would be with a proper ADA-compliant ramp. The sidewalks would be five feet in width, so that it allows for more walkability and accessibility, and will ensure that we do curb extensions, so we have four-foot clearance around utility poles and obstacles. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the five-foot sidewalks mean it's a wider sidewalk and a narrower roadway. For the water, how do we achieve the goal of having a reliable system? It's replacing eight-inch pipes with, six-inch pipes with eight-inch pipes. It's making sure, as Johanna alluded to, these old systems that are over 100 years old, that they get a refresh. It's including more valves throughout the distribution system so that you can isolate portions of the system, and so when you have a repair, when something happens, you don't have to take down more people than you need to, right? So you maintain your level of service for your customers. And then, as we do all of this, the fire flow also improves, which gives you more reactability to any future emergency. On the stormwater side, how do we mitigate to the 2070 10-year storm? How do we make sure that we're addressing the nuisance flooding? By increasing pipe sizes, by making sure that we have enough catch basins, and we revised the catch basin layout. We have deeper sand pumps so that we can take the water on the catchment with increased rainstorms. We also propose that we're going to increase the green infrastructure features so that we have plants and absorbable materials that can take the impacts of the storm. So those are the three categories in the streets portion of the construction documents and deliverables that Pam mentioned. We did our opinion of probable cost. So for the roadway improvements, replacing the water mains, replacing, upsetting the drains, increasing the quantity of catch basins to properly mitigate the storm, and the fire retention basins, we're looking at $6.3 million in today's dollars. So this will have to get indexed once the city decides to go and put this in construction. Additionally, you see that we'll piece out the wastewater improvements from this contract. This is a trenchless rehabilitation, so this can be done without having to disturb the road. You're going through the manhole, you put a cured-in-place liner into your sewer, and this gives your sewer another 30 to 50 years' worth of useful life. There may be some spot repairs if there's any intrusions in the line that we'll take care of, but what this does is that it renews your pipe so that you get more useful life. Because it's old, 100-year-old pipe, it's three-foot vitrified clay that is very frail. So this will renew the system, and from our estimate, we're looking at about $1.5 million, again, in today's dollars, without being, without indexed for the time of construction. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Pam to tell you all about the parks.
Great. Thank you. All right, so the Lincoln Street Park. The main improvements include improving the overall landscape, removing the, there's right now, there's an asphalt circular drive in there that's going to be removed. Invasive trees are going to be removed. We'll retain the healthy native trees in the area. We're going to be adding some shade structures and seeding. There'll be two play areas, one for like the younger crowd, like two to five, and another one for like five to 10-year-olds, as well as a half-basketball court, all in about the same area. Additionally, there'll be a community garden, which you can see jutting off the bottom of the area. It's going to be a community garden, and there's also going to be some rain garden structures. There's going to be pathways, and we believe that this is going to be a great asset for the neighborhood. The opinion of probable cost for this park, again, in today's dollars, we're estimating to be about $4 million. The Parsons Street Park, just down on the other side of the area, and the other side of the roadway, is also going to have improved landscaping. We're going to have a play area, an open area. There'll be some seeding, some shade structures, and, you know, like I said, a play area for two- to five-year-olds and some seeding. Additionally, some additional plantings will be installed as well. And that one is about a little less than $0.5 million in today's dollars. And those are basically the, you know, the overall big picture of what the designs look like, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer those.
What was the delineation of the streets in the area that this is all encompassing?
There you go. So it's Oakdale to almost Main. So the sewer portion is a little bit bigger footprint. It goes down through Main and, what is it, Lincoln?
Main Avenue, as opposed to Main Street.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Make that clear. We're not getting all of that done here.
Let's not talk about Main Street.
Okay, thank you. When you were talking about the parks part, can you just go back to the illustrations to show me where older adults who wanted to use the parks for exercise and leisure, where they would be, where those seats are that you were talking about, and what structures might exist for older people in exercise? Yeah, so there's going to be a lawn with seating. See that large lawn area? To the left, on the left side, there's seating there. Additionally, there's, as we mentioned, there's going to be a walkway around, so there's going to be a walking area. So there's seating there, and there's also seating areas at the perimeter of the walkway. So I'm just wondering if those walkways will be accessible for, for example, a wheelchair? I believe they will be, yes. Okay. I figured with the talk of the curb cuts and everything, that's something that you're really paying attention to. I've just been wondering if it would go into the off-road part. Yep. Any other questions?
I just, Councilor Jansik from Precinct One.
Two.
Two. I'm sorry, Precinct Two. The precinct that is responsible here.
I can see my house on the edge there because I immediately border this park. I just want to say, I've been following this since I moved to East Hampton in 2021. Very excited to see this continue forward. I did have, I guess, a question and more of a statement. First, the statement, I just wanted to clarify if any members of the public are watching or here in person that this project is not going to be taking any land away from backyards, especially there was a concern along Federal Street, I know, with that proposed walkway between the two parks. So I just wanted to clarify that that's the case for any residents who might be concerned, that there is no eminent domain that's going to be used for this project. The question I had, which might be more something for the next phase as you continue on, is around lighting. Will there be increased installed lighting with these two parks, or are you going to just be utilizing what is currently in place there?
My understanding is that what's currently in place, unfortunately, KMDG, who's our partner in the parks, was unable to attend, but, and Johanna, please feel free to interrupt me, but my understanding is they didn't want to promote the usage of the parks in the evenings or well into the nights, so at this moment, we're not including additional lighting. We are leaving connections should the city decide to do that, but my understanding is that we're not.
There's one small light towards the entrance, more for safety, and so that isn't in the parking area. But otherwise, there was no other additional, the conduits are included, but there's no additional lighting planned at this point to try to dissuade.
Thank you so much.
I had a counsel get them.
Not a question, just a comment. I've just really appreciated. I've attended many of the community outreach events that you did and the number of people from the neighborhood and around from the community who participated. I appreciated that. I think that it was just an indication of making it an accessible process, as well as just doing your and the city's due diligence in terms of outreach and making sure that there is a lot of community participation and comment. So hats off to you for really being diligent in looking for that.
I just had a quick question, and it, I'm at the number-one precinct because this is now, this is the precinct being discussed. Of course, Precinct Two. With regard to the public's input in the process, I'm familiar with design phases in 50%, 25%, 50%, 75%, and I apologize if I missed some of that, but oftentimes, when the plans come out before the public, "Oh, my gosh, you're going to do that with my curb cut? With my, my, this?" So would there be any further comment or discussion period or question period for residents on this, in this process? Or has that all been completed with complete designs, and you're satisfied that everyone's going to be happy with this? Kind of a loaded question there. Just so we all could understand.
Yeah, these are really intended to be the final plans at this point. We've had, we've been trying to make updates on the website as information becomes available and share 50% plans and sort of as we go along the way. So the intention is really that this is factored in as much input as we can. At some point, we sort of need to put an end to the design stage so that we can move forward.
And?
Can I add something?
Please.
Yeah, and the city did a great job of targeting direct mails and had an email list, so people in the neighborhood were very aware that there was stuff online, that there were community meetings coming up, so there was, so in my view, it seemed like there was plenty of opportunity for the residents to weigh in during, up to this point in the process.
Thank you. That's great to hear. It's just those questions will come up as time proceeds here. Anyone else with questions? We thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from elected officials. Councilor Jansik.
I think this is just like an all Precinct Two situation tonight.
Oh, well.
I have a few things I'd like to just mention really quickly. So coming up this Saturday is the inaugural cat parade event, which is funded by a grant from the East Hampton Cultural Council, which is a local chapter of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Full disclosure, I am one of the co-organizers. That will be taking place this Saturday in the aforementioned Parsons Street Park that was just described, so you'll get a chance, if you come, to see the before and hopefully the after in terms of that design. That's taking place from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. That's the first event. Second event, which will be taking place before our next meeting, is Porch Fest. Again, full disclosure, I am another co-organizer of Porch Fest, also taking place in multiple neighborhoods around the city, including New City. That's taking place on Saturday, October 4th, from noon to 5:00. Three neighborhoods are going to be taking part this year: New City, the Maple Street Neighborhood, as well as the newly-named Park District, which is the area of the city between Park and the high school. And Porch Fest is an organic music festival. We have, I believe, almost 50 performers playing this year. We are basically doubled in size from last year, which was doubled in size from the first year, three years ago. So hopefully, people can come out to that. It's a really wonderful event. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is, again, the other ECC in East Hampton, which is the East Hampton Cultural Council, they give out grants every year from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and grants are determined by city size. So we have, I believe it's a grant of $16,500 for this upcoming grant cycle. The grant cycle is currently open, and anyone who has an idea for a project that is related to arts, culture, humanities can go ahead and submit their project for consideration for the fiscal year 2026, which is from now into next year. And so that grant cycle ends October 16th. And if anyone's interested in that, please go ahead and check out the East Hampton Cultural Council's website. They also have a Facebook. They also have a Facebook page as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's from the city's ECO initiative, on Sunday, September twenty-first, from one to four, at Smith Vocational High School, there's a Get Energy Smart Energy Fair that will be taking place. So it's open to everybody.
Thank you. Any other councillors? I'll take the opportunity then just to speak for Precinct One for a moment. The discussion we had about the four-way stop coming to Loudville Road, I wanted to give an update and say that the signs have not come in yet, so the stop signs are not yet up. They're, we're still waiting for them. We're now ramping up, I've asked the police to ramp up enforcement in that area with the thinking that there is opportunities to come from, particularly from the West Hampton side, heading in down Loudville Road. And if one happens to be heavy on the pedal at that time, they might lose focus and all of a sudden see a stop sign someday, and oh my gosh, we, the, the message boards are not going up yet. They're going to go up just before, a few, a week or two before the new stop signs. But we wanted to ramp up enforcement so that folks who may be heavy on the pedal would have a chance to slow down in the future. The hope was not to be punitive, but to be informative. There is a stop sign coming, we wanted you to know. So warning to everybody, please drive within the speed limits in that area. Thank you. Any correspondence, none, president communications? I have no particular communications this evening. The mayor communications, I believe the mayor went off to, and he had to leave the meeting to end another meeting. So next up on the agenda is finance. You again.
Finance.
Finance.
Mr. Finance.
Mr. Finance, all right. Okay, so yeah, we've got a couple of things. The first one, I am not super excited for, it is a somewhat long resolution. I'm not great at reading somewhat long resolutions. I caught a little bit of heat for not doing this great when we made the motion on, in, in finance, but I'm going to try and do better. I'm a flawed person, but I'm listening and learning. I have, yeah, I have.
Whatever was in the packet.
I have what was in the packet, so, all right. No, I can do it. Well, I, thank you. Okay. So I'm going to be making this resolution in the form of a motion. Draft order of adoption, Ferry Street Invested Revenue District and Invested Revenue District Development Program. Whereas the Ferry Street Development District was created by order of the East Hampton City Council on July eleventh, twenty eighteen, in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-Q, and whereas the July eleventh, twenty eighteen, City Council Order states that the city, states the city's intent to authorize the creation of a development program which would capture revenue in the Ferry Street Development District and use it to finance public infrastructure improvements in the district, and whereas the city desires to create a statutorily required Investment Revenue District, IRD, and Investment Revenue District Development Program, IRDDP, and whereas the IRD will be within the previously created Ferry Street Development District, and whereas the IRDDP will create a plan for public infrastructure improvements in the diff district, and whereas the IRDDP will establish a development program fund, which is comprised of a project cost account and a development program sinking fund, and whereas the January, in, in January twenty twenty-one, the City Council approved an agreement under Section six A of MGL Chapter one twenty-one A, which exempts the Ferry Street Mills properties from local property taxes and instead establishes a schedule of payments in lieu of taxes pilot through twenty fifty, and whereas the diff framework allows the IRD revenues to be captured and held in the development program fund and be invested in public infrastructure improvements in the Ferry Street Development District, and whereas the IRDDP will have a duration of thirty years, which aligns with the pilot schedule established under the six A agreement, and whereas the investment of IRD revenues in the diff district will allow for the clearance of blighted structures, the creation of public parking and amenities, and will leverage private investment, including development of market rate and affordable housing and commercial real estate, and whereas the city intends to borrow up to three million dollars for the purpose of financing public infrastructure improvements in the IRD as outlined in the IRDDP, and whereas the revenues can be used to pay all or a portion of the debt service obligation allowed when borrowing for public infrastructure improvements, and whereas the city of East Hampton finds that the IRD and IRDDP are consistent with the requirements of MGL Chapter forty-Q and will further the public purpose of encouraging increased residential, industrial, and commercial activity in the city of East Hampton and the Commonwealth. Now therefore, the city of East Hampton hereby resolves pursuant to Chapter forty-Q of the Massachusetts General Law to, one, designate the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District, such Ferry Street Invested Revenue District being within the previously created Ferry Street Development District. Two, adopt the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Plan on file in the Planning Department. Three, establish a development program project stabilization date of July first, twenty twenty, and an end date of June thirtieth, twenty fifty. Four, establish a development program fund with a project cost account and development sinking fund pursuant to said Chapter forty-Q. And five, direct that the Planning Department, under the supervision of the mayor, is authorized to take all actions which are required, reasonable, and necessary to administer the implementation of the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District and Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program. And six, direct that all municipal departments aid the Planning Department in the administration and implementation of the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District and Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program, including but not limited to the Assessor, Treasurer, and Auditor Departments. Seven, direct that all relevant municipal departments report the ongoings of the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District and Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program to the City Council upon request. It is resolved that this resolution be and is a formal duly enacted order of the City Council of East Hampton, Massachusetts, as approved by the mayor, identifying and approving the formation and creation of the proposed Ferry Street Invested Revenue District, Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program and Development Program Fund, and identifying the entities and/or individuals who may act on behalf of the municipality in implementing the Ferry Street Invested Revenue District Development Program within the Ferry Street Development District.
Do you get a second for that?
Is there a second? We have a second. Thank you for your reading. We appreciate that and for your disclosure. Your disclosure at the beginning.
Can you repeat after the second?
Is there further discussion on the resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, councillor Pete.
Well done.
Thank you. So then the, the other things we dealt with. The one final thing, we did meet to discuss the City Council action request to adopt the Mass General Law, the Chapter twenty, the Act of nineteen eighty-seven. That vote came out with a margin, with a, it was a two to one vote. We've received some communication. Two to one? Two, in favor. In favor. Yes. We, we have received some communications since then about the project, and I think it's clear that we, there's some communication we need to do about that, but we aren't meeting again for three weeks, and so at this time, I would personally like to set a public hearing for this item. It doesn't mean that we ultimately need to vote on it that night, but I think that there would be, just in this particular item, which does sort of concern the, the balance of powers between the mayor and the council, I think that there would be something productive about having that conversation prior to the mayoral election. If at that point, the council decides that they want to wait to discuss that further, then that's a conversation we can have at that time. But that's my preference, some other people might feel differently, but I, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for October eighth for this item at six fifteen in these chambers.
Second.
There was a quick second. We have a motion and a second. I wanted to be sure we had full discussion, if there would be an opportunity. Is there any discussion on the matter?
No, I, I, being part of the Finance Committee and subsequent communication we have had, I think getting more information via the public and having a larger scope of dialogue is the right direction to take for this. It's, it's big enough that we should probably afford it with a, a bigger attention span for it instead of voting tonight.
And this is the time for attention span? It is the season. So I, I, I agree with that thinking. I would like to see, I'm not, I'm not sure about final votes, and we'll have, I'll have a chance to think about that, but the motion on the table is to set a public hearing, which will enable further discussion on that. So I.
There's a second as well, so we have to vote.
There is a second, so we would have to vote, so I, I would likely be in favor of the vote. Is there any other comments on the vote?
No, we have to vote.
Any other comments on the motion to set the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? No abstentions? Okay. And the date again, just for? The eighth of October. The eighth at six fifteen. In these chambers. And thus concludes. That concludes.
One item may need an extension, the city space at Honeywell?
Oh, okay, yeah. I guess since the seventh is before we meet again. Yeah, can I just ask for like a thirty-day extension on the, on the, in the form of a motion, could I request, I would like to request a, a thirty-day extension on rescinding of borrowing authorizations for city space restoration and Honeywell Energy Conservation Project. It's something that we, we just ran out of time at our last meeting to discuss, but I, I plan to take up at our next Finance Committee meeting, which I would like to set for. Were we in the middle of a motion? Oh, yeah. Well, we don't need to, but yeah, which will be next week at our regular time, but like, that's, so I'd like to discuss this next week at our regular meeting. I just, we haven't gotten to it yet, so I would request a thirty-day extension. Thirty-day extensions, there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes carry, no, no nays, no abstentions, I hear it. So then, yeah. Thirty days is granted. I, I, we've, we've got new business that we're going to be discussing, and we can introduce it at that time. But the point is just to say that we, we'll be meeting at our regular time Wednesday, five thirty. Excellent. Thank you. Public safety?
Unfortunately, due to conflicting schedules, we have not had a meeting since our last meeting. I will be working with councillor Riley to coordinate a meeting in the very near future because we haven't met in a little bit, and I think it's necessary. Other than that, thus concludes from public safety.
How about an extension on the review of language and the traffic rules and orders?
Okay, in form of a motion, I'd like to request a thirty-day extension, the review of language and the traffic rules and order.
Thirty-day extension requested, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Thus concludes.
This concludes. Appointments. Councillor Smith?
Thank you. The Appointment Subcommittee last met on Monday, the fifteenth, at six thirty, and at this meeting, we focused on the Appointment Committee Handbook that councillor Riley had, councillor Riley had put together, which really creates a lot more clarity on the specifications of each of the different appointment committees across the city. There's been a lot of frustration that some committees have more written about them than others, and so for example, this will say whether or not, how many, it will say how many members the committee has, how many of those members are voting members, whether or not the committee is allowed to have someone who resides outside of the city of East Hampton on the committee. So it really just brings a lot more structure and consistency to the way that we describe all of the committees. And so I don't have anything to present at this time regarding that, but we did work on that at the last meeting, and we set a meeting for Monday, October sixth, where we will, we will consider the four appointments that are before the Appointment Subcommittee. And thus concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance. Councillor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was yesterday at five P.M., and at that meeting, we discussed the short-term rental general ordinance, and we wrapped that up, and we will be bringing that to council. At the last meeting, we set a public hearing for October twenty-second at six fifteen in these chambers, so that will be coming your way. We also have a joint public meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the review of the zoning ordinance amendments for the short-term rentals, and that will be happening at six P.M. on October seventh. The other items, the proposal prohibiting the application of bio solids on municipal property, that was not discussed yesterday, but we had sent it to the city solicitor, and we have received feedback, and we will be addressing that at the next meeting. And the other items, we are continuing to, to work through, and that's everything our committee has to offer council this evening.
Thank you. Property. Councillor Pete? Thank you, Mr. President. I almost tried to answer that. Property's not met since our last meeting, but we, we'll, we need to meet soon, so we should, we'll, we'll talk about that and set a meeting to discuss the items on our agenda. Excellent. This concludes. Thank you. Rules and government relations. We had one matter before us for discussion at our last meeting. At that time, we discussed the East Hampton, the city of East Hampton Resolution in Support of Democracy and a call for the return of, to constitutional principles that are the foundation of our republic. The matter was discussed, there was a vote of two to one to recommend going forward on the matter, bringing it to the council. The changes that you have before you, the document was read last time, and you may have seen it, I hope. The changes that were added, a couple of things were added. I'd like to just say that rather than, since today is September seventeen, and today is Constitution Day, we've asked that this be extended for a period called Constitution Week, September seventeen through twenty-three, asking our citizens to affirm the ideals of the framers the constitutions had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Those were the additions that were made since the last time you heard this. Those were the additions that were made since the last time you heard this. I'd be happy to read the entire document should you so desire. That is typical. But I could dispense with that if you'd like, since we've already had one. I'm not seeing any movement either way. I'll proceed with our normal, our normal course. This is a resolution to support democracy and a call for the return to constitutional principles that are the foundation of our republic. Whereas September 17th, 2025 Constitution Day marks the 236th anniversary of the United States Constitution. And whereas the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts of 1780 is one of the oldest functioning written constitutions in the world and serves as a model for the United States Constitution of 1789. And whereas the Commonwealth's Constitution written by John Adams identifies key aspects of American governance that are now widely accepted, including, one, separation of powers, two, checks and balances, three, independent judiciary, and four, the provisions that protect individuals against state power and which were later reflected in the U.S. Constitution as the Bill of Rights. And whereas James Madison wrote in Federalist Paper Number 47, "The accumulation of all powers legislative, executive, and judiciary in the same hands, whether of one, a few, or many, and whether hereditary, self-appointed, or elective, may justly be pronounced the very definition of tyranny." And whereas in just seven months, the current president and his appointees have shown disregard for the separation of powers by disobeying court rulings, two, attempting to overturn birthright citizenship, three, denying foundational civil liberties such as habeas corpus, four, withholding congressionally approved funds, five, closing congressionally created departments and agencies, and six, unilaterally imposing tariffs. Seven, interfering with state in state-run elections. Eight, destroying the U.S. military, deploying, I'm not destroying, thank you, deploying the U.S. military on U.S. soil against our own residents. Nine, obstructing congressional oversight of executive departments and agencies. And 10, launching military strikes without the consent or authorization of Congress in violation of the Constitution and the 1973 War Powers Act. And whereas the president and his appointees have publicly stated and shown that they are, one, targeting Massachusetts residents through aggressive immigration enforcement under the false pretense that our Commonwealth is unsafe due to the presence of immigrants. Two, terminating protected status of our immigrant populations. Three, withholding funds from our public schools. Four, withholding funds from an attempting institution-wide censorship of our world-renowned educational, healthcare, and scientific institutions. And five, threatening military intervention to interrupt activities that are plainly protected free speech under the Constitution. And whereas the Supreme Court and Congress have generally acquiesced to the president's abuse of powers, including recent Supreme Court decisions holding that President Trump is absolutely immune from criminal prosecution, from conduct within his exclusive sphere of constitutional authority, Trump versus the United States, that the courts lack the authority to issue nationwide injunctions to block blatantly unconstitutional orders like the President Trump's order ending birthright citizenship. Cite, case cited, allowed President Trump to end the temporary protected status of Cubans, Haitians, Nicaraguans, and Venezuelans without court review. Citation. Noam versus Doe. While congressional Republicans rejected a war powers resolution that would have let Congress decide whether President Trump could strike, could again strike Iran, declined to assert the Congress's constitutional authority over spending and tariffs. And whereas the actions of the President Trump and his administration have led other U.S. jurisdictions to pass resolutions calling for an end to the behavior that resembles that of an absolute ruler and tramples on the foundational principles of our Constitution. And whereas the Attorney General of Massachusetts, Andrea Joy Campbell, has sued the Trump administration numerous times in order to stop unconstitutional or otherwise illegal acts depriving Massachusetts residents and institutions of their civil rights or congressionally mandated funding. Whereas the people of East Hampton have repeatedly shown through protests and rallies that they demand democracy and adherence to the Constitution. Now therefore, we, the East Hampton City Council, do hereby resolve that the unconstitutional and unlawful actions of President Trump and his appointees should be condemned. And be it further resolved that we urge the Massachusetts Congressional delegation to continue to push their congressional colleagues to exercise their legislative authority to enforce the Constitution, to work with the judicial branch to restore the separation of powers and to ensure that illegal or unconstitutional acts, including acts of corruption, are overturned. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council also commends the Honorable Maura Healey, Governor and Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell for the vigorous defense of the Constitution, our fellow citizens, and our public and private institutions in the Commonwealth. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the City Council shall cause this resolution to be submitted to the U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Edward Markey, State Representative Omar Gomez, Senator John Velez, Governor Maura Healey, and Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell, and East Hampton Schools Superintendent Michelle Ball. That was added at the meeting. I apologize for not announcing that sooner. Be it further resolved that we, the East Hampton City Council, by virtue of the authority vested in us as the City Council of East Hampton in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the week, including September 17th through 23, as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to affirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Remembering that lost rights may never be regained. I would accept a second?
Second. I was so moved, I didn't say. I was caught up in it.
It is our Constitution. It is our foundation. Any further discussion on the resolution? Counselor Terrell.
I just want to be transparent. I am a member of the Rules Regulations Committee also, and I was the one that voted against this resolution. I just wanted to read a brief statement on why I did so. While the title of this document, "Resolution in Support of the Constitution and Democracy," sounds harmless and even noble on its face, a closer look reveals it to be divisive and political. I believe it undermines the very principles it claims to uphold. The First Amendment of the Constitution protects free speech, yet this document claims to speak for all East Hampton residents, effectively silencing those voices who don't agree. East Hampton prides itself on being an inclusive and diverse community. That should extend to political diversity. This resolution doesn't foster dialogue. It further polarizes us, turning a local body like our City Council into a battleground for national partisan fights. True constitutional fidelity isn't about one-sided proclamations. It's about creating space for every voice. On a more fundamental level, this resolution distracts from the real work of local government. The job of a City Council is to draft symbolic statements on federal policies that carry no legal weight or practical impact. It is to facilitate good government policies that directly improve the quality of life here for the residents of East Hampton.
Thank you. Counselor Pete.
I appreciate that statement, and there's parts of it that I like, but I just, there's parts of it that I respectfully disagree with. So I just wanted to say a couple of words on that point because some of the dialogue around this has got me thinking about these things. And so, you know, anyone who knows me knows that I am not a gigantic fan of the sort of, the more symbolic resolutions. Not because I disagree with their content, but because I just think that it's not the sort of thing that I think necessarily we should be focusing as much time on as we do. So I do, I appreciate that feedback and I generally agree with that part of it. But I do think that broadly, when the council makes a resolution, we're stating that we, as the City Council, or at least the City Councilors that choose to vote in the affirmative of that thing, are supporting that. And I don't think that in that statement, there should ever be the presumption that we speak for the entirety of the city or even the entirety of the voters. We don't. We don't get elected with 100% of the votes, you know? Like, that's not what we, I just, I get this thing, this pushback that somebody says, well, you're doing this resolution and that resolution is stating an opinion that I don't agree with. And it's fine for people to say that, but there's not a single opinion that everyone, all 16,000 East Hampton residents agree with. We're not stating in any way in passing a resolution like this that all 16,000 East Hampton residents do agree with this. What we're stating is that we, the City Council, agree with it, or at least those who choose to vote affirmatively. And we're all free to choose to vote against something too. But I just think that 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 framing of things, that saying that we, the City Council, we believe a thing, we think a thing is important, we think a thing should be recognized. Do we spend too much time on that? In my personal opinion, yes. Do we have the right to do that? In my opinion, I think absolutely, yes, we do. And I think that sometimes it's important that we do. And I think sometimes it's important that we say things. And, you know, we have a big diverse body. Not everyone's going to agree on everything that we say. That's fine. We don't, we should never claim to speak for all of the people in East Hampton. We will never do that on anything. But I do think that we do have the ability to say, we, the East Hampton City Council, feel certain ways about certain things and want certain people to know about it. And that's all that a resolution is. So, sorry if I went on a little bit of a rant, but it's just, it's just a personally interesting thing that I've been sort of seeing in the dialogue and I just wanted to weigh in on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thoughts? Ideas? I'll say that I brought this forward because of our times. The times in which we live are just as important as the times of 1787. The principles that we adhere to are principles that are alive. They're principles that live for us within that Constitution. And I wanted to remind everyone that it's in our veins. It's in your veins. It's in the public's veins. They should be cognizant of these matters. Because it does matter. And it's the local government level that we get to hear about these issues. And we're touched and being, touching our constituencies in terms of being closest to them and they closest to us. If you go to your representatives and senators, they don't live in East Hampton. They're not part of East Hampton. They seem miles away for the most part. Sometimes you're lucky enough to live in that community. But it's important to bring that home. And this, this matter lives in our hearts. It lives in our salute to the flag. It lives in our community. And everyone should be cognizant of that. With that, I'll accept any further discussion, there being none. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No extensions, motion carries. Thank you so much. This concludes Rules and Government Relation, except for the extension from, I'll ask for a 90-day extension on the water operator issue. In the form of a motion, a motion and a second for the extension for the issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Old business, not impending. New business, amend Exhibit A to disposition of Republic Safety Dispatch Director. Who wanted to take that on? Public Safety Dispatch Director?
It's like a
to be
Would that go to Public Safety or Ordinance?
I would say that it goes to Public Safety.
There will be a portion that will have to go to Finance eventually. Funding, once it's approved, I believe that's.
Once it's approved, would we like to send it to both committees?
Well, at this time, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. At this point, I don't believe that there's any, like, you're just adding a position. Am I incorrect there that this is adding a new job description? And then if we wanted to hire somebody for that job description and the money wasn't in the budget, then that specific thing would go to Finance, but right now there's no, yeah.
Ordinance?
Ordinance usually handles Exhibit A things.
Entertain a motion to send an ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supplemental appropriation request. Oh, gosh. Counselor Pete.
Cool. So, yeah, this is, I'm going to make a request. This will be your first reading, request in the form of a motion to send this item to Finance for review and to set a public hearing for this item for October 8th at 6:15 in these chambers. And I'll actually make this also a motion for the interdepartmental transfer behind. I'll do both in one, in one motion, if that's okay? So.
I would rather do the other. I think it may deserve further consideration, but let me think about that. No, you're okay. You're okay.
So just to send these to Finance is all the motion would be? Okay, so here the first one. Our request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $105,918.59 to be transferred from General Stabilization, $105,918.59 to be transferred to FY26 Safety Complex Generator Repairs, $105,918.59. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will be used to fund repairs to the Public Safety Complex Backup Power Unit, including generator end unit removal and overhaul, control unit upgrade, and the backup rental power costs associated with this work. So that's the first one. Second one's an interdepartmental transfer. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $16,250 to be transferred from contributory retirement, $16,250 to be transferred to police clerical, $8,190, fire clerical, $4,640, technology assistant, $1,300, council and aging outreach worker, $1,100, council and aging clerical, $1,010. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund reinstated hours for AFSMI union positions.
Second.
Motion in a second to send to Finance two items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No extensions, motion carries. The conduct of the appointed members? The code of conduct for appointed members would go to?
Appointments?
Something related. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think that it could go to Appointments. I would entertain a motion to do that again.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to send the above-mentioned matter to Appointments. No further consideration, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Updated Ferry Development District, was that what the resolution was?
I think that's what the resolution was. I'm not sure.
That was the resolution section which we dealt with?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. We're at the end of the agenda.
We did it.
Any other, already? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I just want to stay and have fun.
I was hoping you'd come over and meet tonight.